Hey, we call this meeting Tuesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Boards of Director's Study Session. Call it the order. First item is roll call, please.
Dr. Brett Echols.
Here.
Dr. Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Mike Schaefer.
Here.
President Robert.
Here. Okay. Do we have anyone who wants to speak in public comments except on a specific agenda item? Seeing none, we'll go on. Items of study. Consider participating in the California Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll do the quick introduction, then I'm our Treasurer, Mark Davis. So this is the new investment opportunity for for the district that was created in cooperation between the California Special District Associations and the League of California Cities. I first learned about this new investment policy from Neil McCormick, CSDA CEO, when he gave presentations to ISDOC's quarterly meeting. After I saw his presentation, I did invite Mr. McCormick along with Rick Wood, CSDA's Finance Director, to meet with myself, District Treasurer, Mark Davis, and Finance Manager Caitlin Tran. We did have that meeting, shared with us some of the benefits or some of the perks of being a member of what's called CLASS, the California Cooperative Liquid Asset Security Systems. And so I've now asked a bad District Treasurer, Mark Davis, to give his his input on investments. And he is here this morning to give you more details about it, and we are seeking direction from the board today after Mark's presentation. So I'm going to turn over to the Mark Davis, our District Treasurer.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Good morning, Mr. President, Board members. As Scott had mentioned, we did get an opportunity to meet with Neil McCormick and Rick Wood from CSDA to discuss this new local government investment pool option that's going to be available to really all local governments, cities, special districts, and any other joint powers authorities, other forms of of government agencies. This local government investment pool is going to be administered by a company called Public Trust Advisors. And they are a registered investment advisor that is under the Securities and Exchange Commission. They're headquartered in Denver, Colorado, and currently they have they operate the exact same type of pool in ten different states. They have sixteen different pools in those ten different states, and they currently manage about fifty-four billion dollars of government government agency monies. We, your current investment policy does allow for investment in local government investment pools. The way your investment policy is currently written is we call out specific pools that we want to want to invest in. And right now, we only have two pools that we are authorized to invest in. One's the State of California Local Agency Investment Fund, and the other one is is Cal Trust. And with those two pools, we only have money at life. We we've never put any money with Cal Trust, even though they're an authorized local government investment pool that we can invest in. This agency or class is going to be offering two different types of pools for investment. One is going to be a a very short term pool, which will operate virtually identical to life. It will be triple A rated. There won't be any minimum investment we would have to put there, and we could have an unlimited number of withdrawals and deposits each month. The net asset value on that particular pool is is one, which means that there's no gains or losses in the pool. It's just a deposit account, so the money you put on deposit there is going to remain at that same value, market value. The second pool that they are going to be offering is what they're calling an enhanced cash pool. And there it's really looking at more longer term investments. The liquidity is is we could get money the next day if we needed it out of that pool. Same type of thing, unlimited deposits and withdrawals, but there the net asset value is going to float. So if we were to invest in that pool, just like some of the other fixed income securities we have in your investment portfolio, you'll see market changes in that each month when you when you get the Treasurers' report. This particular pool is organized in the form of a joint powers authority. And should the district choose to join the pool, whether or not we put funds there or not, there's really two levels of participation that that you could have. One is just to be a participant, and if the board decides that that's kind of the route they want to go, all that's going to be required to join is for myself to fill out some forms that allow us to participate in the in the pool. The second option that is available is to join as what's called a founding participant. And as a founding participant, that would require a resolution to be adopted by the board, authorizing the joining that JPA. You would become a signatory to the JPA. And then board members could be eligible to sit on the board of the of this local government investment pool, should you cho choose. That's really the only difference between the two types of participation levels. There's no other benefits other than the opportunity to be able to sit on the board for participating as a founding participant. There's no set number of founding participants that they're going to have. This is a brand new pool. It hasn't even launched yet. They're hoping to launch it later this month, so I don't have any history I can give you on how it rates are going to compare to life and other of the investments that you currently that we currently invest in, in discussions with Neil McCormick and Rick Wood at CSDA. They do believe that the rates are going to be a little bit greater than what we see in in life. Life right now is running, getting close to the one half of a percent mark, just a little bit above as rates are going up because life is very short term. Its rates go up kind of just lag shortly behind the the market. So what we're really looking for today, oh, later this month at your board meeting, we'll be bringing your investment policy to you for your annual consideration, just like we do every June. And with it, if this sounds like something that is of interest to the board, we will incorporate that into the investment policy when we bring it to you in June. If the board decides that you would like to participate as a founding participant, we would also bring back that resolution to you in June at your June board meeting for consideration and potential adoption. That's really all I have about about the pool. There is a attachment that is a little bit detailed that goes through the presentation that Scott had set through back in April. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that that you may have.
Any of the board members have questions?
I have a question, Mark. Do you recommend us doing this or wait and see how it develops?
You know, from from a standpoint of joining, joining doesn't commit us to do anything. It's not until we actually put money there that something happens. So if you decided that you wanted to join, the timing is good right now from the standpoint of we can incorporate it into our investment policy when I bring it to the board later this month. In practicality, I probably won't put money with them right away. It's it's brand new. I'd like to see how it works, how the rates are comparing compared to the market when we do have opportunities that come up for investment. The way I would see this working is really in conjunction with in conjunction with life, we would probably right now, we have all of our liquid money that we need for our dry spell sitting in late. This would give us a another option to be able to diversify that very short term investment into a couple of different places to be able to meet our very short term cash needs. So so yes, I would see us maybe potentially down the road, putting some money there for those diversification reasons. But I probably, if you adopt in June, I probably wouldn't put it there right because I'd like to see how how performance goes.
Dr. Schaefer. Yes, I just wanted to say, of course, everybody knows I sit on CSDA. But you know, this is really a good deal. And I think we're taking it cautiously, which is good. But I really, really believe in it. I've seen the presentation up in Sacramento, and it sounds good, but you know, I think that Mark's doing a good job the way he presented it and us being careful, but at the same time being in there because it is important that it's a new wave. It's the way it's going to be, but it's an it has a lot of good features, especially the kind that, you know, we can get our money quick if we wanted it and and different aspects. But this will be all written out so that we can have a better understanding of it, too. But CSDA is presenting it to all the agencies. It's up to them what they want to do with it. Thank you.
Dr. Echols.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, a couple of questions. First, can you just help me understand the so the JPA that the class would form and supervised by a board, how does that compare to our existing things? As you mentioned, the two other class or the two other trusts that we invest in, how are those managed versus this being managed by a JPA?
Sure. With with life, life's being part of the state of California. The state treasurer sits on the the board of life. And life also has board members that are appointed, elected, that sit on on late. It's not a JPA. It's actually carved out the California Government Code as to the ability to be able to operate. Cal Trust is virtually identical to what class will be. Cal Trust is a JPA. And years ago, the district did sign an agreement to to join Cal Trust. Again, although funds have not been have not been placed there to date. So Cal Trust and Class would operate similar. Late is just a little bit different because it's called out specifically in the California Government Code.
So the so but this board of supervisors will, how will they be appointed, voted? How's that going to work?
They they would be all elected for certain terms. The board was all set up pre- previously when they were first looking at forming and when Public Trust Advisors had approached CSDA and the League of California Cities, both those entities, CSDA and the League of California Cities, did do due perform due diligence on Public Trust Advisors, the company that's going to be managing the the pool, and both entities are endorsing are endorsing class. But there will be a period of terms that the board members will sit on. There will be and they will all come from the founding participants. So if you're founding participant, you would be eligible to be elected to that elected to that board. When we bring back, if this is something that you are interested in, when we bring back the actual resolution, and that I can certainly provide more information at that time as to the actual election process and how it goes. Like I said, it's just just being established. They haven't even launched the portfolio yet. They're just going through the organizing documents right now with the attorney that's helping them set this set this up and the initial members that are going to be on the initial board.
Okay, and then, I mean, right now we have two funds, as you mentioned, similar for short term liquidity. Why do we need a third when one of those two we're not even invested in currently?
Yeah, it's a great question. Cal Trust, I've never really felt comfortable putting funds there. When they first launched, it was a good alternative delay. We brought it to the the board, and it was discussed at that time. We added it. But I never ended up putting money there because Cal Trust was it's very difficult to get the money into Cal Trust, difficult to get the money out of out of Cal Trust. It wasn't as liquid as life was. And given that the way that your revenue cycle, your revenue stream comes in, we have the very dry period from May through November each year where we really need to have access to liquid cash on a daily basis to be able to pay bills, to be able to pay for capital improvement projects when big projects are happening during that revenue dry period. So it made more sense and has continued to make sense to be only at life to be able to get same day access to to our money. The short term portfolio with class will operate exactly the same as life does. It remains to be seen what the difference is going to be as far from a rate perspective. They're just they're telling us it's going to be a little bit greater from an interest rate perspective as compared to life. But I don't have anything to base that on until we see what performance is going to be. When we look at the other pools that they operate in other states that are in a similar setup as as this, and they're all called class funds. It's just, you know, Colorado class, Florida class, and, you know, just the name of the state in front of it. Their rates are all a little bit better than life, so I would anticipate ours would be. But each state has its own investment policy or its own allowable investments that allows government agencies to participate in. And these agencies will have to, this agency will have to follow that same type of investment scenario that we're restricted to in California, which may be different than some other some of the other states.
Okay, so I mean, la- last question. I mean, I'm assuming you're present, you're you're recommend, you're rip, yeah, you're recommending us to probably follow this. I'm guessing presenting it to, and if I'm correct, I mean, is there a harm in waiting until we see their history, their performance, their rates, their how money's liquid and all that, take the next year and watch? Is there a harm in that?
No, there's no harm in that. No harm in that at all. This is it's brand new. CSDA is making making it known to all of the all of its member agencies that it's out there. It's available for them as a good alternative to life. There is, there's no harm in waiting for a period of time before you decide you really want to participate or or not. And and even if you decide, we asked the question with Neil and Rick, were there going to be a fixed number of founding participants that they were going to that they were going to allow? And what if the board wanted to, you know, join in a later time? Could they still join as a founding participant if they wanted to? They said that at present, there's no number of fixed signatories that are going to be joining the JPA. And yes, you can join as a founding participant at any time you want. That could always change if they change the bylaws, but at present, that that was the response that we got.
Perfect. All right. Thanks, Mark.
Dr. Schaefer, you have your hand up. Mike?
Yeah, I couple of questions, Mark. Yeah, can you hear me?
It's very choppy.
Okay, how about now?
Not coming through good.
That'd be better.
No.
Vice President Schaefer, if you'd like to turn your camera off.
Issues. Still no. All right.
There you go.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that working better? So, Mark, you can hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, as you know, Mark, recently, SDRMA formed a captive for investment purposes and a captive that was formed in the state of Utah based on captive laws and things like that. Is is this program, this JPA, going to be domiciled in a different state, i.e. Colorado?
No, it won't. It won't be. That's a good. That's a good question. So what they've done is the Trust Advisors is they're headquartered in Colorado. But as they have opened new investment, local government investment pools in other states, they've set up offices in those states, and that will be the case here. There will be an office in California to address the California class.
Okay, so we want to have the ability to, the reason we formed the captive through SDRMA was to get some other investment opportunities that aren't allowed to government agencies in the state of California. This JPA isn't really directed that same way, is it?
No, it's not. It needs to follow and and pass along to the California local governments allowable investments that are allowed under the California Government Code.
Right.
And and the type of insurance captives at present are not allowed under the California Government Code.
Right, okay, that that. Thank you for answering it. My feeling on this is I, you know, JPA is different in that the members elect their board of directors. And if we're going to go into something like this, I would prefer to go in as a founding member so that we have a voice, so we have the ability to be elected to the board to make sure that our interests are better protected or that we have some input. We have more input. You know, all all members of JPAs have input, but we are on the board that carries a little more, excuse the language, more more weight. Okay, so if we're going to do this, and there's no risk, and we don't have to invest anything, I would say we go in right away as a founding member so that we do have a voice on the board to better serve our constituents. That that would be my my thought on it. Thanks, Mark.
And any of the other directors have questions?
I agree with Mike Schaefer. It's probably, it's not going to hurt us to get in now, and we don't have to put any money in now. Just wait and see. Going as a founding member.
Now, I have no problem with going forth with it. You know, I I think what Mike said is true, that once they get started, they're going to fill up faster than you think because the offer's good.
Dr. Echols.
I just, I don't know, called me a nervous Nellie, but when it comes to investment and especially public funds and things like this, to get involved early, while in the private sector, your returns are better when you hit that market early. I'm not sure. Getting into something where we don't know, Mark, you know, mentioned several things we don't know. We don't know what their rates are, their rate returns, their liquidity. I would, I would prefer we sit on the sidelines and watch and see and see how this performs and and but the point is made that, and I agree with Vice President Schaefer, that to get a seat at the table would be important. So whether we do that now or in six months or nine months from now, I would go along with that. But at this point, I'm not sold yet, so.
I thought, Director, I thought you were a risk taker.
With my money, maybe.
Mike Schaefer, how do you want to weigh in on this?
I I think I did. I, again, I I I knowing CSDA and knowing the due diligence that they do do, as Mark mentioned, you know, I I don't disagree with Brett that sitting and waiting isn't such a bad idea. But in this case, I I have a lot of faith in what what CSDA has presented to us on other things. So I would say we we go forward with it, become a founding member.
You know, I don't have a problem with CSDA. We we have not used the other trust that we have available to us. It hasn't done us any harm. I guess I'm in favor of going forward with it. Because I don't see any harm in it, but so I think the consensus of the board is, you know, that that we potentially, that we become a founding member and then let Mark, you know, I trust, I guess what I was trying to say is I trust Mark's judgment as to whether or not we ever participate in this. Basically, it'd just be a paperwork exercise to allow us for potential. But with Mark's, I I trust Mark, whether we ever invest any money in it or not. So I think the consensus of the board is, you know, that we become a founding member.
Okay, Director, you want us to report back on June twenty seventh with a resolution for you to consider adopting to be one of the founding members?
Yes, and then Mark and and Mark said then by then it could, you know, have some additional information. We could make choices.
Well, this is a, as District Treasurer Mark Davis said, he will wait investing until he sees the performance of of the portfolio, so.
Well, I'm talking about some other information that Mark might gather in between now and then to decide on whether or not the board goes forward with it.
And just a note for the record, I'm going to be opposed today.
Yeah.
Pushing it forward. New information always can change my mind at our next board meeting, but as of today, I'll be the lone dissenter.
Yeah, we, yeah, we can make the decision at the board meeting.
Yep, thanks.
This will be at our next board meeting.
Is that, Mark, can you get the paperwork done for the board meeting?
Yes, that's that's correct. Well, there will be at the board meeting, there'll be a separate item on there regarding your consideration of of adopting a resolution to participate as a founding member. So we'll have that at the board meeting. Your investment policy will also be at the at the board meeting, just following that consideration of that resolution.
Okay, thank you. I think we can go on to the next item, which is by number, item number two, bilingual pay.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this item was first presented to the board on on April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. There's discusses I staff to report back with additional information. The board also directed staff to bring this item to the citizens advisor committee for their review and recommendations, which they have. They they did review this item on May eleventh, twenty twenty-two. So to give this presentation, I am going to turn it over to Diana Podorsky, our Administrative Services Manager.
Good morning, Mr. President and Board. According to California Government Code, we are required, it requires local agencies to assist
Can you pull the mic closer?
Better. Government code requires that local agencies that serve a substantial number of non-English speaking people must employ a sufficient number of qualified bilingual persons in public contact positions or as interpreters to assist those in such positions to ensure information and services are provided in the language of the non-English speaking person. I reached out to Lieber Cassidy Whitmore, our employment law attorneys, to confirm this information. And they did confirm that public agencies must employ a sufficient number of qualified bilingual persons in public contact positions. The local agency is the one that determines what constitutes a substantial number of non-English speaking people and a sufficient number of qualified bilingual persons. Within the district service area, the population includes approximately twenty-nine percent of primarily Spanish speakers. Staff is recommending that the district define substantial in regards to this government code at a benchmark percentage of twenty-five percent of a people group of the same non-English speaking language. Once that threshold has been met, the district will provide the public with bilingual interpretation services. As I stated, the district service area includes twenty-nine percent of Spanish-speaking public, which is above the recommended bench benchmark of twenty-five percent. CMSD has been promoting our programs through public outreach campaigns in both English and Spanish since twenty eighteen in an effort to reach the community that we serve. The translation of public outreach materials and communication from English to Spanish requires trench translation services as well as do resident phone calls and emails from Spanish speakers. The district does not currently offer bilingual pay for employees required to use their bilingual skills on a continuous basis outside of their normal and 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 typical job duties. The district is proposing the addition of bilingual pay as special pay. Staff is recommending additional compensation be provided to employee or employees who have been certified for the performance of bilingual skills. CMSD conduct us conducted a survey of other local agencies for their bilingual pay information. Of the thirteen agencies who responded, the average monthly amount for bilingual pay was one hundred and thirty-five dollars for speaking and one hundred and seventy-five dollars to speak, read, and write. This is monthly. And one hundred and seventy-five dollars to speak, read and write. This is monthly. When an employee is required to use their bilingual skills on a continuous basis outside of their normal and typical job duties. The district is proposing a bilingual pay in the monthly amount of one hundred and forty dollars. To utilize bilingual speaking skills and one hundred and eighty dollars to speak, read and write. Bilingual pay would be reported to CalPERS as a special compensation. To receive this bilingual pay, employees would be required to pass a proficiency test. To certify that they are proficient in speaking and or reading and writing in an eligible language. Which currently we are only suggesting Spanish. Employees that are certified. And they receive bilingual pay would be designated as district translators. And they'd be expected to serve in that capacity as the need arises. There is sufficient money in the budget to provide bilingual pay to one employee. The CAC, as Scott said, had the opportunity to review and discuss bilingual pay. And they unanimously approved recommending that the Board of Directors. Adopt a bilingual pay policy for district employees. The alternative to offering employees special pay for bilingual skills is paying a private consultant to perform the services. The district's consultant can provide bilingual skills at seventy dollars an hour. But. I don't know if that meet meets the California government code, which states that we must employ a sufficient number of. Of qualified bilingual persons. So I'm not sure if that is a legitimate alternative, but. That is, that's my report. This concludes.
Do any of the directors have questions? I have one. You mentioned. A list of how we are required to communicate with with the constituency. Would would you? Tell me that again. I think it was email and probably.
What we're current currently how we are, we do get, we get phone calls, emails, we have people. If somebody comes into the district and needs an interpreter.
Yeah.
Yes, then then we would have to provide.
Okay, so that's what we presently experience. That's not what the law requires.
Well, the government code does require that we employ a sufficient number of qualified bilingual persons. In public contact positions or as interpreters.
Okay.
But does that say you have to have payment, extra payment for that, or just provide someone in that position?
The code does not state that there has to be extra payment, but that would be above. An employee's regular duties because it's a a regular and constant duty. It's not just something that they're doing for a month or two.
So you do you you surveyed other agencies to find out what they what they presently pay for this type of service?
Is this through a benchmark?
We are proposing a benchmark of twenty-five percent of a people group of a non-English speaking language. And right now that would be Spanish speakers, non-English.
Okay, that's how this.
Spanish. We don't have any other people groups that speak a different language that are close to to the twenty-five percent.
You know, Orange County Fair does that. And if you can speak Spanish, then you get paid more. I know. Interesting.
On the second, Brett?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I had several discussion topics at the last meeting, so I won't repeat them, but a couple. How does the state legislature and or courts currently define substantial?
They don't define.
They don't.
Leave it up to the agency.
Exactly. So we just came up with this twenty-five, twenty-nine ratio. Okay. And then in. And then in, how does legally define a non-English speaking person?
That would be somebody then that is their their first language would be Spanish that they are. We took our information from a census that people identified as Spanish speakers as their primary language.
But that doesn't mean they don't speak English.
Yes, we we just don't know what what their limited English may be or if they're completely fluent. But if that is their preferred language or the the language that they are. I think the bottom line is we want to commute communicate our message as effectively and efficiently as possible to our public. And so that's, that's, that's why we are seeing the need. That's why in twenty eighteen, we chose to offer our public outreach materials in Spanish as where as well as English. And it has proven to be very beneficial to us.
But I guess I'm getting at what happens when a Vietnamese, primary speaking Vietnamese person calls in the district?
Well, the Vietnamese language we do not have, that's a, let's see, I'd have to look at the graph. They're not even close to twenty-five percent.
But I'm saying one person.
We do have Vietnamese-speaking employees that we could transfer to, but they are not required to. We do not require them to speak to the to the residents. That 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 would be a non.
So in essence, we're favoring one language over another.
If someone speaks in Vietnamese, we're going to try to find someone to can help interpret Vietnamese and help that resident. Now, because the Vietnamese population here are speaking is not that twenty-five percent threshold. That employee will not get special pay because it does not meet that threshold.
Then that'll lead me to my next question. So if I remember correctly, one current employer employee is a bilingual. And this employee currently deals with a lot of our translations. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have several employees that speak bilingual.
Okay, so going forward, let's let's just say. Over the next two years, six employees say, well, I'm going to go get my proficiency test. So we're going to offer that additional bump in pay because they passed the proficiency?
It would also, we also taking consideration their interaction with the public. How much interaction do they have with the public? If 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 they're not, we have some employees that 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 are very proficient in in speaking. But they don't use it in writing as part of their job duties.
Right.
Right. So it just really depends. We will take it on a case by case basis. So again, we would have to look at what what kind of interaction does this employee have with Spanish-speaking residents?
So but in in essence, in in theory, every employee who interacts with the public can get this additional pay. If they pass the proficiency test.
Not necessarily, because we can determine, make a determination, we have enough employees right now that can provide that service to the public.
But so again, this would probably be more of a legal question. I would fear that if we deny one employee that pay. And they're customer facing, we set ourselves up for a problem later.
It would something we would have to discuss with our legal counsel, yes.
Yeah, I I would be very concerned with that. But then Diane Beck, a question in regards to, I mean. We've all been involved in hiring in some form or fashion, either been hired or hired someone else. Someone who comes to you a job applicant that's bilingual in whatever language or trilingual or whatever. They may be more valuable higher than someone maybe who isn't. Has that been your history? I mean, that you've seen?
Well, at this time, we do not ask or require employees to be bilingual, so we don't, we're not even aware of. How much, how many staff are right now? We're just looking to have. An employee right now would who would be certified. They would be considered the district translator and they would be called upon. So if there were another employee that happened to be bilingual also, we would not call upon them to come when there's a Spanish speaker. We would call upon the person who has been designated district translator and receives the bilingual pay. If we, I would say if we have an increase in 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 Spanish speakers and it and it seems that we need. A second employee, then at that time, I think Scott, we would revisit and 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 look to add. But currently, we're a small organization. We don't need multiple bilingual speakers at this time.
No, but inevitably, whatever happens, we'll end up needing to hire new people at this district at some point. So what I used to always tell my people that I consult with, if you're bilingual, put that on your resume. We'll know it. I mean, if the person knows what they're doing and applying for a job, so in in theory, that person has a leg up already. Versus someone who's not. That's kind of what I'm getting at is going forward, not sure the bump in pay is even necessary, but. That's what I got for right now.
I was just curious, would this entail hiring somebody just for this position?
At this time, we know that we do have somebody who is bilingual. But at the same time, that person would be required to be certified as bilingual before receiving the pay. So we wouldn't be hiring an additional person. At this time, we would allow an the employee who does this without being paid for these duties. We would allow that person to take the certification test.
And if for some reason they didn't qualify, then we go out for or go someone else inside?
We, yes, we would look internally.
Okay.
Currently, how many? People do we have in that position right now that can interpret and speak with Spanish?
How many employees?
We have.
I'm not even sure how many we have.
Is there more than one?
Yes.
More more than one employees that can speak and write Spanish. And how are you going to, you're just looking for one person to do it officially?
Well, of I of at least one other employee I know of, there's not, that that employee does not have public inter, much public interaction.
I know, but what happens if they both apply for this position? You know, you're going to go through the process. Are we just going to choose one?
There's no new position.
I know, I know, but I mean to to for this pay. Again, like I said, it would have to, we'd have to evaluate what kind of interaction does this this person have with the public? Does this, does this person help us interpret our our outreach efforts? Does this person have a lot of interaction with the public when they call in for trash complaints? You know, or sewer complaints. What kind of interaction does this employee have? If it has minimal in interaction with the public, then then we're going to say, sorry, you're really, you're not eligible for this pay. I'm just getting back to what Brett's saying, you know, there's really no limit. Well, okay, let's put it, let's put it, let's put it in perspective, though, if they say we hire six. Six employees that have bilingual pay, it's still going to be less than hire a consultant at seventy dollars an hour. We just put in our financial report that if we, if you want to go on a on a private side at seventy dollars an hour, it's going to cost us thirteen thousand dollars to do all this bilingual. Versus twenty-three hundred dollars for having one employee versus or or twelve thousand dollars having several employees. So it's still going to be, it's still to the district benefit, having this, having bilingual pay. It's it's a benefit, it's a service to the public. We want, we want our employee, we want our our the public all speaking, no matter what they speak. Right now, we know predominantly our community, other than English, is Spanish. We want them to recycle the right way, right? And so what's the best way to communicate with them is through their first choice of language, which is Spanish. And as Diana's mentioned, since we went bilingual with with all our outreach, we're seeing larger participation in our programs. I relax, yeah.
And and if I could. Respectfully remind you, we do already offer for CWEA certificates for sewer employees, wastewater employees. We do offer premium pay for the each certificate that they have in collections, electrical instrumentation. We offer welder premium pay, shift differential pay, CCTV pay, commercial driver's license pay. So this is basically the same thing. This is bilingual pay that we would be offering administrative. Or if 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 it were necessary in the field, at this time, we, our field staff doesn't have the public contact. The high level of public contact right now. And so so. This is no different than asking our our wastewater employees and requiring them to be certified in certain areas. This is the, this is basically the same thing. Bilingual pay is that we are asking employee to be certified. And then we would provide the additional pay.
I have another question. Okay, so you're talking about in the field, someone has this certification. How much do they get per day?
Think, their certificates are one, one and a half percent per certificate.
Per percent of their annual.
Of their of their base pay.
What does that come to roughly?
It depends on what their base pay is. Each each employee is different. And so it's one and a half percent per certificate, one, one and a half percent per their of their hourly base pay.
No rough idea?
Oh, so if they make a hundred thousand dollars, it's fifteen hundred dollars?
That per month? Yeah, if you want to put the numbers, but yeah, if a hundred thousand dollars, it'd be what, fifteen hundred dollars? Yeah.
And there's probably six, six certified. CDBA certified wastewater workers.
And and some of them have more more certificates than others.
So hire, so you you get one point, one and a half percent for like a grade one. And then each grade, you get, you get another additional one and a half percent. So if you got a grade two, you get three percent. You get a great, grade three, you you're at four and a half percent.
Well, I'm a grade five and I don't, I don't get anything. Brett?
Just just to follow up on that. So I I understand your point. I don't translate the two at all, but I understand your point. So which leads me back then, again, our current employees. Who translates, say, our emails are promotional, pick up the phone, it's no additional work for them today.
It actually is additional work. They do spend. A good amount of time translating our our public outreach, our newsletter, responding to emails. So it it is definitely additional work taking away from their regular. Their regular duties that they are assigned to. And and so in theory. I I and I'm just, I mean respectfully, I'm saying this, in theory, if we do not, if we deny paying bilingual pay, that person is not required. We would, we, everything would go to a translator. That person is not required to translate. That's not part of their job duties currently.
Well, so my point is, if there, if someone's in charge of writing a newsletter, whether it's in English or Spanish, what's the difference?
He's not in charge of writing the letter.
We write the newsletter in English, we give it to this employee, okay, we need this interpreted in Spanish. That's additional work for her. That's not what she's supposed to do. That's additional work.
And and that employee, the current, that current employee is not responsible for writing the newsletter. She just interprets it. Somebody else puts the newsletter together and 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 she spends her time translating it.
Is the newsletter the 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 current? Extra job responsibility for the most part?
Newsletters, flyers, brochures, anything we do in writing, even if anything in writing has to do, we give it to the employee to interpret it for us.
Yeah.
Yes, I I have gone to that employee before. Maybe I'll get a something in Spanish, email, voicemail. I will go to that person.
Have we checked with any other sanitary districts if they do this or or anybody benchmark wise does something like this?
In the survey that we we checked with, City of Costa Mesa does it, Midway City does not. But again, government code states that they should be doing it.
Well, if they have a certain level of population. It would be Asian or Vietnamese, yeah, rather than Spanish.
But the code does not say you have to offer more money. It says you have to translate.
Yes, again, we're talking, we're talking two thousand dollars here. If you want to go to the private side, we can do that, but you're going to be spending more money doing that. So this is more in a cost-effective way, an efficient way of providing a service to our community.
Why would we have to go to the private sector? We'd do it today, correct?
We would do it today for additional pay. But for the bilingual pay.
But what I'm saying is we're already doing it without going through the private sector at no additional pay currently today.
We're doing, we're doing it right now, but is it the right thing to do?
Well, and I'd like to point out, if we did go to an outside vendor for the translation services. Today, if the front office gets a phone call, needs a translator, and we have to use a service, that service knows nothing about the district. They don't know our our trash or sewer. They can't answer any questions. Like, they can answer basic questions, but they don't know about us. So is that customer getting the service we want to provide? Whereas if staff member can answer, answer anything about the district.
Out of curiosity, if Mike Shaeve, Director Schaefer is on, I'd like his comment too.
I don't see his hand raised.
Well, my hand's not raised, but if if you want me to give an opinion, Arlene, I'll be glad to give an opinion.
Yes.
I I'm probably a grade twelve. I made it through high school. Bob, did you?
Wait, you haven't been addressed by the the chairman. Now you're addressed. Now you're addressed.
I, I am dressed. Okay, so this is 2022, and I think society has decided that we're gonna allow people to have their own language and to speak their own language. I, with that premise in mind, a couple of things that, that, that I would like to express. We, we are under the gun, and we're doing a lot of work to make sure that we comply with certain state regulations, and I'm gonna go back to 1383. We have a duty to the, we have a duty to make sure that 1383 is implemented, along with a lot of other programs that we're looking at. And if we have a portion of our population that we need to reach, then I think we need to take some extraordinary steps to make sure that we get our message across. Sorry about the truck going by. Secondly, let's, let's think about what it does for the employee to give them a little bit of incentive pay to do something extra. I, I think Diana makes a good point in that if we have translation that needs to be done, and we pull the employee away from their regular duties, that's extra work. They've got to go back now and make up the work that they missed because they had to do translation. The other part of the employee getting this extra pay, I think, if I work for a company or I work for an organization that rewards me for a skill that helps the organization, I'm gonna take a lot of pride as an employee in knowing the fact that my employer rewards me for doing something extra. You know, I, I have certificates I have to give to my employee, and I pay her extra, and she takes a lot of pride in obtaining those certificates. So just like Diana said, with all the other things that our employees do to get extra pay, I think this bilingual pay is important for the employee to take some pride in the fact that they're, that CMSD is rewarding them for doing something extra. And then my final point would be, I've told you, I think at the last time we discussed this, if I have to have an interpreter come in, in my office, and my company tells me I have to service my customers, it costs me $85 to $95 an hour, and I don't know how it all breaks down, for me to get an interpreter on the phone, that takes, that takes some time, and I'm gonna probably lose that customer. The ability for CMSD to have someone on call immediately to help with an issue for one of our ratepayers is worth whatever the amount Scott said. It's not that big of a deal. I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill with this thing, and I, I would like to see us go forward with, with bilingual pay. That's it.
Just one follow-up. Legally and per policy, if the direction the board is, can we cap it at one employee period that gets this additional pay?
What happens if that employee's on vacation or calls out sick? Who's gonna, who's gonna fill in for her or for that person?
Okay. I mean, again, we do this currently with our current staff. I mean, this $2,300, yeah, as Vice President Schaefer, it's $2,300. If I, if I was an employee right now, I would apply and I would get this thing for the additional $2,300.
What's wrong with that?
We're gonna, it's not gonna be $2,300. It's gonna be 23 times.
Well, it won't. Like I said, we have, we have, I have the authority to, to approve who gets the pay or not. You know, I'm, like I said earlier, I'm gonna talk, what's the interaction this employee has with the public? Our budget is $11 million. We're talking about $2,300, okay? This is nothing. This is, you can be more expensive if you go to the private sector. This is a good service for the public. As, as Vice President Schaefer said, this is, this shows, this is good for the employees. We want, we want to make sure, we want to have our employees feel that they're valued for what they do, and what they, and how they provide that services to us. $2,300 is not a lot of money for what they're doing.
Again, can we cap it at one?
I wouldn't recommend one.
I know you're not, obviously you're not recommending, but can we?
The answer is yes. We can, of course.
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
Scott, what are you recommending?
I'm recommending that while we come back on the June 27th, recommend to come back in June 27th, and the board approve a bilingual pay policy. And we'll have in that policy language that it'll be interpreted by the general manager of how many employees can have bilingual pay. And again, it'll be dependent on their interaction with the public.
Okay.
I know, back to Brett's, how many are you talking about? I mean, just so we know upfront.
Again, I, I'm not gonna hold my feet to the fire, but possibly two, you know? I mean, again, I, I think this, it's important to have coverage when employees are on vacation or on sick. And so if an employee that has that, that, that special pay, bilingual pay is out on vacation leave, I need to have coverage. I need to continue providing that service.
Do, do you, do you have that now very often, the need for a, a second person?
Yes.
Okay, so the minimum, minimum you would recommend is two?
Again, I would have to, that's possible yes, too, and I have to, again, depending on what, how many people submit their applications and what their interaction with the staff is, yes, possibly it'd be two.
Well, I think two is logical, but. Is the board done discussing this item? All right, Jim, Jim.
Thank you, President Uten and members of the board. My name is Jim Mosher. I had a couple of comments on this. First, I certainly agree that communication with ratepayers in their native language is an important asset that the district needs to have. And I certainly agree with the staff, this sounds like a cost-effective way of providing that service currently. Although I would point out that at some point in the future, the district may have bilingual employees, but it may not have one who is so proficient and elegant in writing as the current one is. So we might find ourselves putting out a newsletter that's not well-translated, even though it is translated. But the main comment I wanted to make, and the director, I mean, General Manager Carroll just made that. If I understand the staff report, we'll be coming back to you on June 27th. There's not yes or no, but it will be actually a written policy for you to consider and approve. And that policy could have features in it, such as the discretion of the general manager or the number of district translators that the district needs. Although he's not recommending that, so my comment would be, this discussion today would certainly have been facilitated if you had a draft of the policy, so you knew what you were talking about here. And I think that would have been very helpful, and unfortunately, you don't have a draft of the policy to discuss. And so it'd be the first time you see it at your meeting on June 27th, then you may or may want to adopt it then or to suggest revisions to it. Those are my comments.
Additional comments for discussion at this time?
Just based on Mr. Mosher's comment, so would, if, if we vote to approve or some form or fashion, we're approving this today, the policy would come back later?
You're directing me to bring this back in June 27th with a written policy for formal adoption. That's all I'm requesting right now is to bring it back.
Right, okay. So, but at the, say, it's the next board meeting, if we read the policy and we don't like it, for whatever reason, we could then vote to bring it back to another board?
Or, or dismiss it.
Or dismiss, yeah, thank you, okay.
Okay, I think, I think staff has direction. Item number three is sole sourcing some consulting services for Eldon Force Main scoping and planning. And attempting to secure federal funding of construction of the redundant, a second Eldon Force Main. Mark, you're apparently gonna lead this discussion.
Yes, I am. President Newton. Let me start out by saying that this past February, the Board of Directors approved Project 341, Eldon Force Main redundancy. We transferred roughly $70,000 into a project budget, and that was to move forward with a study to understand options to site, locate, and develop a redundant force main for our Eldon pump station. We're not asking for any action today. We're trying to get your thoughts. We're trying to get your feedback, and we want to discuss an option for moving forward. During the February meeting, I mentioned that we would also look at federal infrastructure funds and see if there's a way we can tap into that, and that's kind of how, I'm coming back today to discuss this with you a little further. Next slide. Just a refresher, the Eldon Pump Station pumps about 3,750 gallons of wastewater every minute through an 18-inch iron pipe. It's about 3,300 feet long, and it transfers 1.4 million gallons a day from the east side over to a large sewer in Fairview. And that's, I'm gonna say that that's roughly enough flow to, to fill two Olympic-sized swimming pools in a day. This is a view looking east along Fair from the main entrance of the fairgrounds, and our force main is in that green belt slash sidewalk area, and it goes all the way to, I guess Newport Boulevard or State Route 55. Next slide, please. We're looking at a, at potentially a 6,000-foot pipeline that crosses under the freeway, and to, I guess a picture's worth a thousand words, our Eldon Pump Station is at Eldon Avenue at Mesa Drive. The current force main travels, I'll say, northwesterly through the, the bridge at State Route 55. It turns and goes southerly to Fair Drive, then it turns and goes westerly to, and makes a connection to a gravity sewer at the main entrance of the fairgrounds, and then goes, continues westerly, gravity flow to an Orange County sanitary district, sanitation district sewer in Fairview. Activities to date, we have been working with Jacobs Engineering and Tremble Company, and we've been drafting an agreement to potentially go forward with them. In the meantime, we've also issued a request for proposals to conduct that $70,000 study that we were talking about in February, and fortunately, we didn't have any proposers. And I was out beating the bushes. I was talking to several engineering firm, including Corolo Engineering, which is literally a quarter mile up the road here. Talked with several other agencies, and there just is no interest in, in doing this study right now. I imagine it's a combination of, there's not enough money in our budget and/or firms are just swamped right now. We've also drafted a letter and sent that letter to the county supervisors, advising that we're interested in getting some infrastructure funding, because as you know, the funds go from the federal to the state to the county, and then the county distributes that to the city. So we, as a special district, have to go to the county and say, hey, we're interested in, in some of these funds. So how did we get here and, and where do we want to go? After the February meeting, I started reaching out to my colleagues and started trying to understand the Federal Infrastructure Act. Because to me, you know, as a dumb engineer, it's very confusing, and I'm trying to understand, how do we access the money? How much money is available? What funding and for what purposes? And all those types of items. Turns out Tremble, who owns our City Works Asset Management System, they've been successfully, I guess, securing money for public agencies to install smart sewer systems. And I think they've got a half a dozen or a dozen grants so far for agencies and cities that, to install smart sewer systems and tie those systems into the City Works Asset Management System. But that's not, wouldn't necessarily want to talk to you today. We talked to Tremble and inquired about an interest in teaming on developing a grant proposal, since they're much more aware of the Infrastructure Act, the federal money, and that they've been successful. You know, we started talking to them about this, and we came back, and I talked with our general manager about this whole process. And we basically thought, okay, let's do this as a two-pronged approach. Let's team with Jacobs and Tremble and go forward with a grant proposal to perform these projects. But if we're gonna do, ask for grant money and federal money with all the headaches that go along with it, why don't we, I guess, look out and see what is our top priority? And it turns out, as you know, to me, this is such a significant issue. If this force main were to break or be significantly damaged through a major earthquake, this was a big issue. So we decided we would go forward with the force main. The second priority would be the smart sewer system. And so, you know, we started going in this direction. So next slide, please.
Mark, Mark, what is a smart sewer system? It's just smart cover?
It's, it's many, it's many things. It's installing smart covers, it's installing flow meters. It's putting, it's having, basically, all these devices go to a, I'll say, artificially intelligent controller that basically looks at trends over time, and the more data it gets, the smarter it gets. And so it's able to say, hey, the flow in this sewer over the past six months has been increasing by an inch, then two inch, then three inch, and it gives us a heads up from overflows. We're not necessarily going in that direction today. So, but that answers your, your question, hopefully, on that. So as you recall, and I mentioned, major earthquakes to me is the biggest issue. But in order to perform maintenance and condition assessments and maybe even refurbish our existing force main, you know, it's gonna be very, very difficult to do this. And, and after shutting down that force main for one night and getting many, many pumper trucks out here, I realized if we have an issue, there is no way we're gonna be able to bypass pump using trucks. And I doubt that if the bridge is damaged, we're gonna be able to put temporary force main across the State Route 55. So to me, this is an issue, and, and we're, I'm very concerned. But it provides, having a second force main provides an opportunity to deal with line breaks, corrosion damage. You know, we had a contractor hit our gravity sewer the other day. So, you know, non-district project could impact our facilities. And I just want to have, and I'm recommending that, we need to be ready for issues to prevent sewer spills. Next slide, please. And I, I showed this slide in February, but this is the type of thing that if we have a major earthquake on the Newport-Inglewood Fault, I'm not saying our bridges would completely collapse, but if we get even portion of this type of damage, our force main goes through the current bridge, and we'd be out of commission for, for quite a, quite a, quite a while. Staff has been, as I mentioned, staff is moving forward with developing a team approach for the grant proposal. And we've been talking to them about how to do that. And as part of that work, we're talking about a $15,000 item that if we're successful at obtaining a grant from the county, we would pay them $15,000 or pay them $15,000 for developing the grant proposal and helping us with getting enough technical work so that we can submit that grant proposal to the county. Now, because we did not get any proposals in for the study that we need in order to understand really, how much money do we really need to spend? What are the options for moving across State Route 55? And all the things that we need to develop, I'll say, a better budget, smarter budget, and what is it that we're gonna do moving forward, and what's the phasing and timing? I got the thinking, well, we have no, we didn't get anything. Consulting firms told me they wanted to spend well over $100,000 on this thing, and that's why they have no interest in our, in our, in our project. So I, I approached Tremble, since we're already talking to them about the $15,000 item, and said, hey, would you be interested in including a $70,000 study as part of your upfront work? And we would pay you that $70,000 regardless if we obtain the grant or not. Because as, since we're going out for an RFP, we were looking to spend that money regardless. And so I guess I was looking to, to do two items here. Submit a grant proposal to the county and then complete the $70,000 study. If, and the reason why we're bringing, next slide, please. And, and the reason we're bringing. And, and the reason we're bringing, I guess, a proposal or this item forward to you and get your feedback is if the grant proposal is successful, Jacobs has the right to perform the design work. Or that's some of the issues that we're talking about and negotiating in the contract. In addition, since they designed the project, we would want to have them do the construction work as, as well. And I don't mean construction as in building the project, but helping us administer project since they're the most familiar with, with that work. So now, the reason why we want to disclose this to you is that there, this amount of work is we're talking up to six hundred, five hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand to design the project and probably about the same amount for construction services. So we're talking about one million to one point six million dollars to do this work. Now, I say it's a possible project budget because I don't really know enough. Are there interferences? What's it going to take to bore across or underneath the freeway? But talking with RBH consultants is, is, and I mentioned this, these costs maybe not quite this high. Cause over the last four months, I've gotten a little smarter about this project. But I'm thinking right now that a new force main could be six million dollars, might be more, could be less. That's one of the reasons why we need to do the study. Of course, the seventy thousand dollar planning study that, that was, we approved budget for in February. I'm thinking engineering and inspection is another, I'm going to say nine hundred to a million dollars. And then we need to have a contingency and we're early enough that really the contingency should be higher. But, you know, I guess right now I'm comfortable with that until we do more study work. And so we're talking somewhere, I'm going to say between eight million and, and eight point five million dollars to do, to do this, this work. Now, if we proceed with the Jacobs contract and the Tremble contract, if we're successful, we'll move forward with the project. If we're not, there is no commitment to even pay back or pay them the fifteen thousand dollars for the grant proposal. It's part of the process of teaming up. We don't, we minimize our risk if we don't, are not successful, but they minimize their risk because the only thing they're really putting on the table is the cost of that fifteen thousand dollars. However, their carrot, I guess, we'll say will be continue on with the design and construction of the, of the project. Next slide, please. So I guess the project approach we're trying to move forward with and we'd like feedback on today is we're interested in issuing an agreement to Jacobs Engineering, which has Tremble as a, I guess I will say a sub consultant. We would pay them fifteen thousand dollars as part of the agreement if we're successful at, at obtaining a grant and, and tapping into the federal infrastructure funds. We would pay them zero if we're not successful. Now, included in that contract would be a seventy thousand dollar item to prepare the study of alternatives, which we have been unsuccessful at obtaining consultants to perform the work. And so we would pay them seventy thousand dollars for that study. Whether we are successful or not, and it's money that we would, I would need, we would need as an agency to outlay in order to understand how do we move forward, whether it's five years from now, ten years from now, or twenty years from now. And as part of that agreement, we would negotiate costs for preparing the design and construction. And in, in the agreement, we're working in limiters that will limit how much they could charge us for the design, how much they would charge us for the construction services. And in fact, really, the, the agreement would include, I will say, a a list of hourly rates that they would charge us. So moving forward and negotiating the fees for design and then the fees, subsequent fees for construction, we would be limited again by some percentage of bid amounts or estimated budget amounts. But we'd also have the ability to negotiate hours to produce each sheet of drawings. And, and that's really what we will do if, if we were successful moving forward is we would say, okay, how big a project is it to design this project? How many sheets are involved? And then we would put hours to that process and negotiate hours. The fees schedule that would be attached to the agreement would then be multiplied by the hours to come up with a negotiated price. And that's how we would limit our risk. And we traditionally, right now, we pay approximately ten percent for design and construction services. Eat for each, ten percent for designed and another ten percent for construction services. I believe because of the magnitude of this project, we can probably negotiate less percentage or less money for, for this design. And with that, we, that concludes my report and I'm here to answer your questions and get your feedback and thoughts. And we potentially want to come back at the end of this month. Or if we can't work out exactly the wording in the agreement, we would come back definitely in July to move this forward and, and start to get a grant proposal to the county and then start the study work.
Good question, but what is a potential grant award?
Well, we, that's, I will say it's unknown. I'm hoping that it's eight million dollars, but it could be half and half. It could be.
They usually don't fund a hundred percent. They're going to probably go eighty, twenty if anything, so they'll fund like eighty percent. We got to fund another twenty percent. It's usually not, I don't, we can confirm, but I don't think it's a hundred percent.
Well, yeah, and you're right, Scott, for typical federal grants, that is my experience that it's not necessarily a hundred percent because they want the agency to put, you know, some of their skin in the game. But because of the infrastructure act, there's been a lot of agencies that are getting a hundred percent. If, if they're shovel ready, the projects have been funded at a hundred percent.
And my second question, like you said, if we don't have to pay the fifteen thousand, if we don't get the grant accepted, right?
Yes, if we do not get the grant, we do not pay the fifteen thousand dollar fee for developing the grant proposal.
Is that fee paid after, accepted or not? I mean, there's no fee, no payment, you don't pay them upfront for that?
No, we do not pay them the fifteen thousand dollars upfront. We only pay them if we're successful at obtaining the grant money that, whatever it is. Now, I will say that, let's say the county says, hey, we're only going to give you eight hundred thousand. I suspect that we would come back and recommend to you that we not move forward with this project right now. Cause that isn't really based on, you know, Scott, I heard Scott mention eleven million from a budget perspective. You know, I know from operating funds, it's probably about six billion dollar budget that we have annually. So spending this kind of money is just not in our cards right now.
Let me correct that, if, if we grant funding, I, I wouldn't say we tabled this project. As I mentioned, we mentioned a staff report, there's other funding alternatives. This project is too important to ignore. And so if we're not successful in receiving federal money, then that I, I would come back to you and recommend we, we, we start, we borrow the money. We, we go into debt and, and all the money for this project. It's just too important not to, to, to ignore it. And as I mentioned, the staff report, there's the, the CSD Financial Corp is one lending organization. Our treasurer, Mark Davis, can give us some other options, you know, based on the interest, what's out there. But again, we'll cross that bridge once we find out where we stand on, on the federal side.
Well, the sewer rate study, this project was a five million dollar project. So that we have adopted, we have five million dollars set aside in, in those rates.
We have, in the asset management fund, yes.
Yeah, no.
Yes.
The rate structure was built on a five million dollar project.
It, it was, but it's in, as Scott mentioned, it's in the CIP fund or the asset management fund. And I don't believe that all of it made it into the current five year approved rates. I think it carries over into the following five year rate, but it is in there. At least five million dollars is in there because when we, when, when we were developing the rates several, several months nine months ago, ten months ago, I, I didn't know what I know today about the size of this project, the cost of this project and, and how to proceed. So we kind of threw a wag at it of what, I guess, and what we should put in it. So, so, but yes, there is five million in that.
Five million in CIP fund, it would go through the asset management fund to be a project paid process.
Anyways.
Arlene?
I believe project, I feel, you know, we've got to do it one way or the other. That we need to really, you know, do a lot more PR on it. Out of curiosity, what have you done by the supervisors? Do you send a letter?
Yeah, so we're, there's a couple of things going on right now. And, and one is our general manager drafted a letter. He sent that letter off to the board of supervisors. And I can't remember the firm that we're working with, but he, through that firm, we've actually scheduled, I think tentatively scheduled the meeting to meet with the board of supervisors and discuss this project forward, see how they feel about it. What information would they need? Scott, do you want?
Actually, we're, we're trying to schedule, we're in the process of scheduling a meeting with the county CEO Frank Kim.
Okay.
The chief operating, or no, CEO.
Yeah, CEO.
Yeah, so we're trying to schedule a meeting with Mr. Kim and to kind of discuss what's the process to some federal money. So that's, that's in the works. So hopefully we have some more information on that soon.
So it, it is thing in person that?
Excuse me?
In person, you're going to?
Well, in person or Zoom, whichever, yeah, well.
If it's not, what are their hearings?
No, 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 this is just going to be a staff meeting.
Okay, and how involved have you got supervisor Foley?
We, we don't, she, remember, she doesn't represent us now. She's in a different district right now. She's district two, she doesn't represent us.
Oh, it's over.
So, and so, and so there's no elections, so we don't, we don't, she did cop, she was copied on, on a letter. We copied all the board supervisors on our letter.
Yeah.
We would, who's our rep?
So do we have Bartlett now?
Bartlett, that's.
Who do we have?
I'm drawn blank.
Well, on the ballot, Foley was on the ballot.
For, for next year. So for, for twenty twenty three, if she wins, she'd win the fifth district. That, that would be our district for twenty twenty three. But right now she's in district two, but that's not our district. Cause they did a redistricting, it's, I know, it's, it's.
It's confusing.
It's wacky. Katrina Foley is not our supervisor right now.
Okay.
Right now?
But she's for us, no matter how you.
Well, the supervisor, that, that election's not done yet. So we could have a whole different raft of supervisors. Director.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So Mark, just question on the seventy grand proposed for the feasibility and, you know, design study we're talking about.
Yes.
That's the thing that we haven't been successful getting other people to bid on that. Is that my understanding?
That is, your, your understanding is correct. Agent, companies have not been interested in giving us proposals to do that work.
So that part, okay, so that's why we're looking at a sole provider with Jacobs and, and do up to that point. And I guess my ultimate question is, if we enter in this agreement with them, I understand the carrot and the, you know, for us, fifteen grand savings and giving them that seventy. After that, what are we committing to?
I guess our commitment right now is they would have the first right to design and build the project with us. That's how the agreement is currently written.
So we would be at that, I, I mean, just by a guess, I'm guessing other firms at that point would be absolutely interested in bidding that work.
I, well, I'm going to say, yes, there will probably be other firms that would, I'll say, submit proposals for the work because we're not really bidding it because of professional services. And as you know, state law has some words to say on that, but yes. Now, they're all gonna, whether we go forward with this team, I think that we're, and that's the reason why it's taken so long to get here is I believe that we've put in, we've placed limitations in the agreement that really is going to get us a, a worthwhile project at a reasonable cost. Maybe not the cheapest cost, but with the magnitude of this project that we're talking about, we really do need a large firm. And I'm afraid that, that if we just go out for proposals, this project could be very expensive for us to design and subsequently build. And so that's why I think we're lucky that Tremble brought Jacobs along and, and because they have a very large organization that has done many, many, many wastewater projects. And they've built many, many projects. And so I think they, they have the wherewithal to do what we need. So in order to team up, or it's really more of a partnership. They're looking to get some commitment because, let's face it, they're going to put in probably more than fifteen thousand dollars to do the grant proposal. Cause we didn't, you know, when Scott and I met with, with Tremble, we basically told them, look, we, we are not going to pay you to do this work. And that's when we came up with, well, would you pay us if you got the money? Okay, we said yes, but we, and then we kind of limited it to this fifteen thousand dollar figure. But I assure you that what they're going to do is be more than fifteen thousand dollars. Just like I believe that if we go back out for another proposal and we take the next six months to beat the bushes and get consultants ready, I believe we're going to spend more than seventy thousand dollars to do the sign work. And I think Jacobs is going to end up doing more than seventy thousand dollars to do the design work. And not the design work, the study work. And so I think we're getting such a good deal that there's, they want first right to, to do this work. Now, if we can't come to a, a dollar agreement, so let's say we've put these limitations and they come back and say, you know what, sorry, we're going to charge you nine hundred thousand dollars, I'll make up a figure here. We can walk away. The agreement, the agreement will, does not require us to move forward for them. So if they, I'll say, you know, basically get rough and they, they decide that they're going to stick it to us, we just walk away.
And not, you anticipate, you read my mind, cause that's where I was going with it. We can, if again, through your experience, your knowledge and what we know out there, if they come in with a ridiculous proposal, we say, thanks, but no thanks, we're going to open up to bid at that point.
Yes.
And hopefully that wouldn't get to that point. But, and I know Jacobs, you know, they're, like you said, they're, they're quality, but.
And I doubt they're going to walk away from this. So I think they're going to, and, and based on the, the discussions that we've already had, I think they're interested in playing ball and, and giving us a reasonable and a fair price, but we don't know what that number is yet. Cause they don't know enough and we don't know enough.
Whatever that price is with seven hundred thousand, whatever it is, we still got to bring it back to the board for your approval. Cause it's gone, my, my authority to approve, so you're going to still receive it and you're going to still seek your direction. Comfortable sole sourcing it, or do you want us to go out the bit?
Got it.
Still receive that.
That makes sense. And then last question. And you kind of hit on it earlier, at eight hundred grand, say a grant approval, that really worth it. Where in there, in our, in this proposed contract, what's the, what's a successful grant approval that we would owe them fifteen grand? That's where I'm like, well, okay, if they give us eight hundred grand, eh, I, I don't know.
Well, no, I, I understand what you're, you're saying, but I guess my viewpoint was if, if we're successful, I guess that the fifteen thousand dollars, as you know, they have rates much two hundred dollars an hour is probably a typical rate. And they're, and at that, you do the math and there's not very many hours in fifteen thousand. So like I said, I think the fifteen thousand, we would, I couldn't do this grant proposal for, I just don't have the time. I don't have the wherewithal. And so paying them fifteen thousand for even if we get ten percent, I think is, is, is worth that effort.
So that's, that's what I'm, so basically we're saying, if we get one dollar out of the feds, we'll give you your fifteen.
Essentially, but I think that, that, you know, if you, I, I don't know. I guess I, I'll say you're essentially right. I was just trying to think in my mind if there's a way we could limit that, but I just think the right to move forward in this direction.
Got it. All right, thanks, Mark.
Do, what do you need from us?
Not, don't.
We need, I'm sorry, we need direction from the board to come back to you on June twenty seventh. Do you think we'll have an agreement ready with Jacobs?
Well, Mark said either June twenty seventh or July, whatever.
Yeah, I, I, I'm hoping.
If he can get it together by, in June.
President Newton, I just submitted a, a second draft to Alan Burns, our legal counsel. Of course, you know, Jacobs, a big company, their lawyers got involved and they've got some additional red lines. So if we can get through that in the next two weeks, we'll bring it back in July and June. That's my goal, is to bring it back in June to get this process started. The goal, the worst case would be July.
The goal is to bring it back as soon as possible.
Yes.
And I think the board agrees with that. So.
I, I guess, again, just to summarize is, if we enter in this agreement, we would be coming back to you when we're successful, when we, before we go forward with design. But most of this process is outlined, including the maximum design and construction fees they could charge us. And because we're talking lots and lots of money, we're bringing this item for you to get feedback. And, and when we come back with an agreement, this is the direction that we're planning to bring to you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. I'd like to take a few. And then what I would like to do is ask, number, item number five ahead of item number four. When we resume in five minutes. Are we, are we all back together? Okay, we'll, we'll go ahead and get this meeting started. What, what I suggested was, we, we discuss item number five before, before four, if that, if the board doesn't mind.
Sounds good.
Okay, let's go to item number five then, which is methods for storing food waste before putting it in the organic recycling cart. Scott?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. So this was an item requested by the board for discussions today. As you know, right now, we offer our free kitchen pail to the public and recommend the public that when they're doing like food prepping or, you know, prepping for dinner or lunch, that any leftovers, they can discard all those food waste in, in the kitchen pail. And then they can eventually take that pail, all the constant pail, and into, in the organic carts. I do, let's say that at last Saturday's shredding composting event, we gave away two hundred of those pails. And after we gave them away, the public was still asking for more. In fact, just during our break, I saw a resident leave H Q with a pail. So they, they are, they are in demand. People, we hope they're using them for the right reason, for, for the food waste. We don't know for sure, but we're hoping that's what they're using them for. But President Newton wanted to discuss, you know, what are other options? If they don't have the, the kitchen pail, what other options does the public have to store food waste before they discard it in their organic carts? And on their staff report, there are several items we, we identified. One of them was a brown paper bag, you know, you can line it with newspaper. And then, and then once that bag is full of food waste, you can just dump the whole bag in, into the organic cart. Another method is reusable container, a tight fitting lid container, what that's, could be plastic, metal, glass, ceramic, like a large yogurt or margarine tubs, juice pitcher, glass jar, any of those materials, you know, you easily put your, your food waste in them, temporarily store it, and then when you're ready to take it out to the organics carts, you can do that. Third item is you can put leftovers in a container, or you can wrap the, the food waste in paper and then store it in a freezer. Keep it in your freezer until collection day, that could down odors. That's another option you, you have. Again, those are some options we, that's what I came up with. If, if the board has any other ideas, we're, we're, we welcome those ideas. We're seeking directions from the board. If you want us to start promoting these other methods on our outreach plan, we can do that. But happy to answer any questions and looking forward for the discussion.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. And it's a quick one. I am getting lots of feedback from people asking, when are we getting our another pail? Not pale, but I should say trash can. They are so excited about, you know, they wanna get it one way or the other. And I don't think any of us have a comment on as far as when it's coming, but you must.
I guess I'm a little confused as far as.
That's a, that's a different discussion item.
I know, I know it's a different discussion, but to me, it still involves the trash cans.
Well, if you're considering, if you're talking about the blue cart, that's, yeah, that's, that's different than what we're talking today.
No, okay, yeah, yeah. It's a good question.
Organics cart, you know.
You're talking about the recyclable cart?
Yeah.
Okay.
Recyclable.
Okay, got it. I'm going to ask for some additional input on that at the end of the meeting.
I, I just want to be clear because, thank you. These three options, these all then comply with the regulations of thirteen eighty-three. So I just want to make from my own thick skull. You could take a newspaper brown bag, like a grocery bag or something, line it with newspaper, throw that, and you don't have to use those, the thin green. And that is part, so are these the only three options that thirteen eighty-three allows in lieu of that green plastic bag?
No, these were just options, again, myself doing some research, what other organizations are doing or how are they promoting S B thirteen-three? And these were the other options that I, that I was able to find. And that's why we're having a discussion today. If you have other ideas, let's, let's talk about it.
So number one, as someone who's been now doing this for whatever, six months or some, the, the green thing, the green pair bags have spilled all over me numerous times. I don't like them, but I've been doing them because it is what it is and I'm trying to get used to it. But I am all in favor of promoting, here are five, six, seven options for the public. Here's how you can properly dispose of your organics. And if there's more than this, I would be very happy to market that to the public because I get asked all the time in my own little even community, I'm like, just put in the green bags. Well, again, they're not the greatest thing in the world, so I would love to look at, by the statute, by the thirteen eighty-three, what is allowable, what can we do? And I would love to market it out there.
You already had time to.
Just, just, I just wanted to say that a lot of people do not understand that we can put pets disposal in there, like the dog and the cat, you know.
You cannot.
Pardon?
You cannot.
You cannot.
I think by statute, you cannot.
Originally, they, originally, they, they, they said that we could, but now they're saying we can't put pet waste in there.
They, yeah, I, I think thirteen eighty-three, we need to check that, but thirteen eighty-three, I think prohibits putting cat litter and dog.
Not necessarily thirteen eighty-three, it's, it's the anaerobic digestion facility at Paris.
Oh, okay.
And, yeah. And I did have a follow-up, because now I'm just spitballing, but just a simple fact sheet. Here's what's allowed, here's what's not allowed.
Okay.
Like, you can line a brown paper bag, but you can't dump your dog, you know, stuff to do, or allowable, not allowable. And if people know that, okay, well, that, that works. I, that would be something I would love to see.
Even when you have the doggy bags?
Apparently.
Not unless it's compostable for the parish facility. Anyway, I have a whole different take on this. I, what my wife and I do is we use deli containers. And we mark them so that we remember which ones they are. So you've got a black mark on the lid and a black mark on the side. And it's either the little, you know, the several little deli containers. We're not vegetarians, but the, the only thing we put in the organics can are generally vegetable cleanings. And there's a raft of, you know, potential things for it. We never have had to put anything in the freezer and we, and rarely, if ever, have had to put anything in the refrigerator. We, we, we store the material until collection day, which happens to be Thursday. That happens to be when my gardener comes also. Thank, thank God, you know, or no, maybe, well, anyway. We, we like to have green waste in the bin before we put the material on top. People have, have been concerned that the green waste cans might produce odors or whatnot, and the green waste sticks to the bottom. So basically, what we've told them in the past is you put newspaper on the bottom and that, that makes it easier for the, the trash truck to dump it. But I, but I'm all in favor of what Director Echols says, you know, we need to provide as many opportunities and potentially even change our video, which I, I think focuses on, on the pails. But we need to, we, the goal is to get the food waste in the organic can. Not, the goal wasn't, you know, put your food waste in a pail and that's the only acceptable method of putting it in the organics can. My wife would never have one of those pails on, you know, in, in her, in her, in her kitchen on the thing, ready to go. The, the other alternative, if you've got very sloppy wastes, is the traditional method is, is, is run them through the garbage grinder and send them to the sewage treatment plant, which achieves the same thing. That has got to have been the world's worst device that was intended, according to me and the sewage treatment plant operators of the world. But it, it gets the material to the anaerobic digesters and it produces biogas. You know, and the goal is to get those food wastes out of, out of the regular trash. One, it contaminates the regular trash, so you, you get, you get cardboard in, you put cardboard. Right now, we put cardboard in our, in our mixed waste container, and if you put the food waste in, that, that recycle, very valuable recyclable product is diminished. Anyway, I, I, I've, I've taken pictures of, of what, what my wife and I uses, and I've talked to Director Schaefer, and, and he basically just uses a compostable bag to collect the waste. And if, if, if it's not convenient, or it's gonna take a long time before their trash day, you know, they, they put it in the refrigerator. So I, I, I appreciate what Director Echols is saying and applaud it. And I think we just need to expand providing alternatives. Be they the pails, which, which apparently are, are usable by, you know, what, five, we've given out five hundred pails?
I, I don't know the exact number. I mean, I just know, last Saturday, we gave out two hundred, so I'm, it's well over five hundred pails we've given out.
Okay, how many have we purchased is what I'm asking?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, so we purchased, we, let's say we purchased seven hundred pails and we have a twenty-two thousand residences. So, you know, they're, they're not finding their way into the, they're, they're finding way, they're, they're finding their way into the community that will, is willing to use them. But I think if we had, you know, well, I don't, I don't want to go any further. Anyway, you know, I, I, I just think the, the goal is to get the food waste into the organic can. And whether that means changing our, you know, additionally changing our video, additionally changing our newsletter or additionally changing anytime we have contact with the public and all the flyers and things that we've diligently produced, I, I think it's, it's an asset to us to expand it, anyway. Did you say Director Schaefer had his hand up? Oh, okay. Mike, you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, thanks, Bob. I, I guess the ultimate solution to food waste, you know, being of my generation, and Brett's probably the only one that didn't get this as a kid, but remember what our parents told us? You're not getting away from the table until you finish every bite. So I, I, I mean, there's an education process that we may need to also instill in the public that try to cut down on the waste. Of course, if you don't cut down on the waste, you're gonna all look like me, and, and I'm not proposing that. But I, I think there's, part of this component is to, to have people change their habits on how much food they buy. And I, and that's just an esoteric thing out there somewhere. I did have kind of an adjunct comment to the food waste. And, and part of what I hope we're doing with the city, since we have no control over the commercial, I think we need to instill in the city this idea that I would love to have every restaurant, every fast food place in the city have one bin for people when they go to throw their trash away at a, at a restaurant, fast food restaurant, is every restaurant should have a, an organics waste container that says food waste only. And that would really help with reaching that thirteen eighty-three goal. So as we move forward in our discussions with the city on, on complying with thirteen eighty-three, I think we need to have that component in there that the city needs to encourage their restaurants and the, and the markets, obviously, to have that same component.
Is the board done discussing, Jim, did you have, you want to comment on this item?
Yes, thank you again, President Newton. I did have a comment. I, I have to begin by asking if we're clear, if the mandate of S B thirteen eighty-three, we know it's seventy-five percent. We, we want seventy-five percent of organics to be diverted from the landfills. Do we understand if the goal is that or it's seventy-five percent of what is in the waste stream, collected waste stream that needs to be diverted? Because there are alternatives in addition to garbage disposal that avoid the food waste going into the collected waste stream at all. And if it is seventy-five percent of the waste stream, it's to your interest to have, to discourage people from doing that. So you get as much as possible weight in the green carts to offset the contamination in the other carts. But if we're simply trying to avoid green, um, organics going to the landfill, those other alternatives that they don't go into the waste stream at all seem perhaps things that we should be promoting. And I'm specifically thinking early in this district's organics program, it was encouraging people to do home composting. We were offering composting bins at discounted price, two different kinds, one involved worms, one did not. And there are alternatives besides that. I think I've pointed out here before, I personally, for the last thirty-plus years, have not put any vegetable scraps of any kind in the waste stream, technically it's collected in Newport rather than here. I simply have a little hole in the yard that I dig and I put the food scraps in there. That quickly becomes a very rich organic, whatever you call that, biocosm or something. It attracts numerous amounts of worms, and once that gets going, the food scraps disappear in about two weeks. And it becomes trivial to, to dig the thing, make a little hole and put the food scraps in there. Now, it's possible with thirteen eighty-three that that is being discouraged because for all I know, I am creating more methane and greenhouse gases than if it went through this process to the Paris Digestor, or in the case of Newport, it's being transported to Yuma to some kind of composting facility that collects the gas from that. But the question is, should we be promoting home composting as an alternative to throwing vegetable scraps either down the garbage disposal or putting them in your organics cart? And we did at some time in the past, was that a mistake? Should be we encouraging it now? Those are my comments. Thank you.
Do the boards have any, any additional comments on this item? Okay, did staff have direction? Okay, now we'll go to item number four. Cal Recycle S B thirteen eighty-three local assistance grant spending plan. Scott or?
Thank you, Mr. President. So you're aware that the district received over sixty-eight thousand dollars from, from Cal Recycle to implement or to pay for expenditures related to implementing S B thirteen eighty-three? We did receive the, the money, the money, as I, I think I mentioned to you last Friday, is, is in the bank. So it is there and it's ready for spending. Before we did spend, do spend the money, the Cal Recycle did request a spending plan from us. In your staff report is that spending plan we presented to, to Cal Recycle. There was a deadline, we had to submit it to them. So that's why it's already. that's why it's already been submitted to Cal Recycle. But for today's purposes, we are interested to hear from the board your comments, suggestions on the plan. And we will move forward from there. But happy to answer any questions we have. Nubila Guzman is also available to have the more specific questions she's available to answer and questions you may have.
I just have a question of $60,000 from maybe we should add to build up more of the other funds for education and collection. How are you going to break down that?
Let me, let me, I'll defer that to to Nubila, how she came up with this $60,000. I believe we're going to probably need to spend that money on administration, but I'll turn it over to Nubila.
Good morning, members of the board. The $60,000 for administration is money that will be used to fund two consultant contracts. One will be with Tripepe Smith. Tripepe Smith will be producing bilingual education and outreach materials for CMSD residents. And we do have a attached to the staff report is a list of ideas. We plan to use the money as an assessment needs to help CMSD figure out what works and what type of outreach is sustainable long term. If you give me a moment, I can pull up. Tripepe Smith will assist us with designing and printing a high a high quality mailer that lets residents know what goes in their organic carts and why we must divert food waste from the landfill. A bilingual animated video, YouTube advertisement, social media content, Facebook's Google search ad advertisement, campaign branding and logo and for PSA videos. We will also, they'll be also assisting us with the stakeholder workshop and some school outreach, just so we can get to the kids. And our hope is that the kids will then give the material to their parents. That 40,000 will go to fund that contract and then $20,000 will go to fund the Mike Vallier consulting contract. And Mike Vallier will assist us with program evaluation, waste characterization studies and SB 1383 compliance assistance as required.
Is that his normal fee, $20,000? It just seems a little high to me.
Mike Vallier does have a really low hour fee. If you give me a moment, I can look that up.
Well, in in our two year budget, he had $25,000 a year budgeted. So so this was an extra 20,000 potentially for him?
No, this will offset what was already budgeted in our contract.
That's better.
Okay. Well, you know, I I appreciate what you said, but I'm not, I'm not sure I would you would you repeat what the what Tripepe will be paid for?
40,000 will go to Tripepe Smith and they will assist us with developing videos, outreach materials, a mailer, developing outreach materials for schools and a stakeholder workshop. So that is just their fee to assist us with all of that.
Okay.
When you talk about producing things for the schools, what type of things are they going to be producing?
We have not had a brainstorming meeting yet. It was just an idea of maybe we can either do some sort of assembly or do some sort of handout that can be passed out at school, some sort of presentation to the students. And again, our hope would be that the students then take that information to their parents and encourage them to recycle their food scraps.
Basically, I think Davis School has been doing this forever. And do you have any, do you have any knowledge of any other schools that has a person that's remotely interested in in facilitating student student education on on this topic?
Not to my knowledge, but I do have a list of schools that would participate in our equal challenge assemblies. So we could reach out to those schools, but it is, I only know of Davis that has an equal friendly green team program. And the other schools, I'm not aware that they have anything similar.
And just as you're brainstorming with our team and all that, as a parent of four and one current high school freshman daughter, they'll never bring it home. I'm lucky to get a report card every now and again. So I would actually, and I had a meeting recently at the school district. The education's got to start there. To be honest, their staff is flummoxed. Their budgets are going to go through the roof with these new requirements and they're not even sure what they're doing. So I would just recommend we go through there. The school system itself has peach jar and all that. They're very great about allowing outside entities such as ours to utilize their communication methods. I'm not sure dropping flyers with kids at the schools is the best course of spending our money when we can use their peach jar to send out that one page flyer, whatever we want to do. So that'd just be my recommendation with the schools.
That's a lot better idea. Because I've seen it for 40 years.
Yeah. Hey, did?
One other question. Did did they submit a budget of $40,000 or is that something that you came off the top of your head with?
No, that was, it's a little over $40,000 and the cost is broken down in the attachment on the staff report. So it does break down everything that we agreed upon for outreach. And it does break down their cost.
And this is just for one year?
Yes.
It's basically producing materials though that could be usable probably forever, but and until the law changes, but.
When do you anticipate? Do we, do we have to do this 22, 23 years? It's going to extend into 24?
The grant is good through April 2, 2024. But I do anticipate that the education and administration funds will be gone in the next fiscal year, 22, 23.
But it can extend into 24, April 24?
Correct. If we do not spend all the money, it can extend through April 2, 2024.
I think I think Scott said that we have to report back to whoever gave us these funds. Have we reported, have we reported back that this is processes that we're going to spend the money on?
Yes, we submitted that plan to Cal Recycle.
And so that's would have to be changed if if the directors would like to go in a different direction?
We we would, we could, yes, if you want direction, we would submit that to approval.
You'd have to resubmit it for approval.
Yes, we'd ask for, you know, deviation in the plan and get their approval.
Okay, Nalani? Or what we, are you looking at, has Mike got his hand up? Mike?
Yeah, since we're brainstorming a little bit, I probably spend too much time on Facebook, but I've really noticed a huge presence from Mesa Water on Facebook with theirs, with their local water situation and I would like to see us come up with something similar. I think there's a big presence that we can capture off of Facebook and any kind of ad that promotes what we're doing. I think a lot of people read that. The other thing I know from a business standpoint, we get a lot of hits on Google Ads and things like that. So as they move forward, Tripepe moves forward with this this stuff. And I'm sure you've already done this, Nubila, but I I'd really like to see us put some emphasis on Facebook and Google and those those things that 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 people hit. I agree with Brett. I raised three boys and it was always, you know, the flyers come home and you don't see it. And mom gets hit with, oh, there's a bake sale tomorrow or something. You know what I mean? So I think by capturing whatever we can on the social media aspect of it is something we really need to work hard at and and ask our consultant to come up with some creative and and point, not poignant, but a relative, you know, important things on on social media. That that would be my recommendation.
Okay. The
Jim has a question.
Oh, Jim, yeah, I think we have more discussion here, but go ahead, Jim. No, go ahead.
Yeah, we we heard in the presentation that the breakdown of the what I what I thought I heard was $40,000, which is coming out from the staff report of 60,000. And and the other part of that is going for something that's very essential, which is the waste characterizations. And I don't know how much I take it that's 20,000. I don't think we could cut back much on that. But I was trying to find where the 40,000 is broken down in the staff report. And I I have the the copy here for the public to look at. And I'm looking at page 16 and I see an approach to where they are proposing to charge the district $61,658 plus add on options that might add still more to that. And then another approach one, which just seems to have some hourly rates with no definite limit on it. So if this is coming back in two weeks at your board meeting, I I am wondering where you're going to see a more clear description or if I'm missing something where it is currently in the staff report that says how Tripepe Smith would be spending this $40,000 because I'm not finding it. And I'm finding one proposal that is far over that amount and would exhaust the entire $60,000 budget, leaving nothing for the waste characterizations the district needs to make. Thank you.
Question, Bob. Scott, are we putting the maximum of $40,000 on that budget? Is that the maximum?
No, I believe the amount was 61,000, but that has other, that that is other outreach efforts other than three.
No, but I'm just, there's going to be a limit because what Mr. Mosher is saying is there's a 20,000 still set aside for Vallier.
Yes. Yes, it'd be a limit because we we don't, we want to use the the grant funds for for that expenditure.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying is, so it's not going to, it's not, is it going to exceed the $60,000 with Vallier's 20? Is there?
Well, no, I guess I'm sorry, Kryron, the Tripepe Smith proposal, 61,000, right? Right, right. So so Mr. Mosher has mentioned that $61,000, that also includes wastewater proposal. So so all that 61,000, 40,000 would be dedicated to the SB.
Okay.
The other 21,000 is to the waste.
That's what I was getting at.
Or breakdown at the board meeting.
Can you repeat what you said, Nubila?
I'm sorry, yes, we can provide a a clear breakdown of cost at the board meeting in our board meeting staff report.
Yeah, that would help.
Yep.
Okay, you know, the thing that the thing that I got hung up on was this $61,000 for education. And I guess I get hung up on the term bilingual education. If if it's just strictly, well, it says bilingual education and outreach. Can you give me a little more explanation of what that is?
Yes, the SB 1383 regulations require that jurisdictions conduct education and outreach on organics recycling to our residents in very language that is mostly spoken in the community for customiz. So those languages are English and Spanish. So we are required to produce outreach in both. The law does not have a threshold, but our consultant has let us know that basically if we are doing English and Spanish, we are fine and in compliance. So any videos we do, any social media outreach, any flyers, any handouts that we do will be English and in Spanish.
Well, we already have several several Spanish presentation methods to the public. And and basically, I think in the in in the community surveys that we've done in the past, the newsletter was by far and away the most important thing that the community uses, you know, to to get an understanding of what's going on with the district. The 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 thing that concerns me and may, and I just may need more explanation of this is over 50% of of the public that we serve is in multifamily housing. And and I think that we communicate with the property owner rather than rather than the constituents, you know, and 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 they need to understand that better. So when we send out a newsletter, does it go to the property owner?
No. So we have two methods of advertising or sending out information. We use service address for all of our newsletter or any program information we want to send out. We use owner address for rate increase notices, legal notices that must be received by the owner, not the tenant. So our newsletter and anything we send out with this grant will be going to the service address, which is received by the tenant.
So if it's a fourplex, it would go to unit A, B and C and D?
Correct.
Okay, that that's good information. Let's see. I had other questions on that. But I can't remember them now, so. You know, this is, this is, you know, a a great fund to have use of. I'd like to see a little, maybe you've already explained it, how that $61,658 is broken down. How is Tripepe going? What are they going to use that money for?
So the administration 60,000 will go towards their cost and billing for the group of individuals that assist us. The education money is to actually pay for the materials. So when we design and print and mail a SB 1383 flyer, it'll come out of the 61,658. Producing the animated video would have come from that money. So again, I can provide a more clear breakdown of what is administrative cost versus an outreach cost in your staff report for the board meeting.
Okay, I I think that would be helpful. And the intern, how quickly, how quickly can we get, how quickly can we get the intern on board if if this was approved?
The intern won't won't be hired till fall because we'll be seeking the students. Now school's out of session, so we look at, we recruit that intern in the fall.
It's a 20 hour a week job proposed, though, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's, you know, it's a lot of information to, you know, to to digest and and I I think staff has directions that we need substantially more information.
On the administration side, correct?
Yeah, at least on the administration side.
And the education side.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Basically, I think it's, you know, what what Tripepe Smith is potentially going to be engaged to do. I think that's so this item, can this item be brought back? It's intended to be brought back to the June Board.
You can bring it back to June 27th, yes.
Okay. Jim, you've had your say on this item. Need to find my agenda. I think we can move on to the the next item, which is item number six, receiving file a quarterly legislative report.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's no presentation, just available to answer any questions you may have.
I would just move, we, I think we've all read it.
Yeah.
Mile is received, whatever. There you go.
Okay, and then we'll move on to item number seven, which is
Wait, wait, I have my hand raised on item.
Wait, wait, I have my hand raised on item six, Bob, if you don't mind.
I can't see your hand, but go ahead.
It's it's up. Question for Gina on the legislative. I don't know if all of you are aware, but I went through Chick-fil-A the other day to get a lemonade, okay? And when I placed my order, the clerk or the order taker said, would you like a straw with your drink? And I said, why are you asking me whether I want a straw? Of course I want a straw. And the order taker said that there was a new law, and I was I'm trying to figure out which law it was. Gina knows which law it was as of June first, it's mandatory that restaurants ask if you want utensils and straws. That's a new law. And I just, I don't know if Gina knows which law that is. It's it's gonna be interesting to see how that plays out, but does Gina, do you know which which law that that came from?
I think it's also includes napkins and
Everything. It also includes condiments as well. I know it's in our state report. I'm trying to find it.
It's not twenty-two thirty-eight, is it?
Uh.
Or twenty-eight twenty-one? You can give Gina, don't don't kill it right now. If you if you could just send me a note, let let me know. I'd like to look into that law a little bit personally, and you can get back to me on it. It's no big deal right now.
Well, I think also, you know, you could bring it back to the board meeting, just as a general item, information item. But and put it on the consent calendar.
Sure, I can do that. I did find it. It it's already passed, so it's A B twelve seventy-six.
Oh, twelve seventy-six, okay. Thank thank you for that. I'll I'll do my research on. Oh, there it is. I see it. A B twelve seventy. I'll do my own research on it. I I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. So we'll move on to the code enforcement officers' report.
Good morning, President Newton, members of the board. I'm here to present my May twenty twenty-two report. This report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement. For the month of May, the C M S D interim code enforcement officer focused his efforts on patrols in various parts of the community. The goal is to identify and deter instances of scavenging in residential trash carts left within public view. In the month of May, the district saw a number of complaints filed with the C M S D interim code enforcement staff regarding scavenging activity in the city. As with most scavenging complaints, the alleged violations take place in early morning hours. In order to address resident concerns, the interim code enforcement officers was trolling the streets by six thirty A M. Included below are instances of scavenging that were detected while the officer was investigating specific complaints. Uh, the month of May, I caught five scavengers listed in the pages following. Wilson, Pepper Tree, uh, two in the Pepper Tree community of Monticello condominiums, and then one on Park Crest, and then another one in the Monticello condominium complex on Minuteman. Any questions on that so far? Trash container enforcement in the month of May, there were a few customer complaints reported to the district headquarters regarding trash carts in public view. The list is or the following is a list of locations where trash cart violations were found and addressed by the courtesy notice process. A total number of violation tags were seventy-two in various parts of our community listed by the streets and the number of violation notices on those streets. Any questions on those?
It's a lower number than normal.
Correct. I was out on vacation for a week during May, and then we did have, you know, a long weekend, so. And maybe people are catching on that, uh, this new guy's in town coming around, serving him notices. I had one case of graffiti in the city listed, seventeen sixty-one Pomona Avenue. I did take photos that are enclosed, uh, reported that to C R and R of replacement. And the tagging was, uh, the language is unreadable.
Question, does C R R replace that trash can?
They do. So they reached back out to me and just wanted some further information. It is a multifamily complex, but as you can see in the photos, uh, they're pretty good about marking their carts and and usually what unit it's from.
That's permissible, isn't it?
Correct. I wouldn't consider that of of graffiti. It's more of a card identification.
Do any of the board members have other questions of David? If not, thank you very much for the report, David.
I'm David.
You have a great day.
Okay, now we're down. Oh, receiving filed assistance advisory committee. Fiscal twenty-two twenty-three goals and objective schedule.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So every year, the myself, the board president, and the citizens advisory committee would meet to discuss a proposed list of goals, objectives to try to achieve in the upcoming fiscal year. So back on May eleventh, myself, President Uden, and C C Chair L D Katz met. Uh, we discussed items for twenty-two twenty-three. Uh, that list of goals, objectives are attached to your staff report. And it's for your review and consideration. It's more just a receiving file, but if you have anything to add, we we can add on to it. And then we're going to present the the list to to the C E C at their July meeting. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Have they have they seen this yet or is this?
No, they have not. This is
This is your initial plan?
Yes.
Just a question, Scott. Uh, I see a two eight rate adjustment for inflation. Where did that number come from?
That's a recommendation that C R R wants. They're they're recommending to present that to the board.
Is under the new renegotiation.
Negotiations, that's correct.
All right, have you finished negotiations yet or is that?
We're just waiting to receive the July rate survey from all the cities um, to see where the proposed our proposed rate will stand with other organizations. So we're we're close, but we're just waiting for the the survey, and I think we'll have one, possibly two more meetings than we can present to the board.
That's good.
And just to follow up, as I read the staff report, so President Uden, yourself and the Chair of the C A C, you guys discussed some items for the upcoming year, but you guys didn't discuss these.
No, but yes, yes, all these items, these are the items that we were, the three of us are recommending.
Okay, got it. Okay, so but there was your question earlier, the the entire C A C hasn't seen that. Just the chair. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we basically just had, you know, questions on five or six of the the proposed items with regard to schedule and or explanation. Trying to trying to make them something that would be more easy to understand. So if no further comments, oh, Jim, I'm sorry. Yep.
Yes, thank you again, President Uden. My main comment was, when I read this last night, I thought it was a very impressive, ambitious, and well-thought-out work plan for the Citizens Advisory Committee, so I commend those who came up with this. In my further comment, I noticed one of the things mentioned in it is for them to monitor uh, the rollout of the three cart system in Newport Beach, which I know something about since I'm one of the recipients of that. And when they review that, I think if they hear an honest report, they will learn as this district will learn if it goes to a three cart system. A public confusion with that system is rampant, I would say. I, to people in Newport Beach, the green cart is something new that they've seen only for a few months. I have the impression from what I see my neighbors putting in it that they think it is basically just a cart to put anything related to your yard in. So they will put in, and there is also confusion about what it says on the label of the cart. Yesterday was the trash day on my street, and I noticed my next door neighbor was putting in the green cart some discarded pots, potted plants from their yard, including the plant, the dirt and the pot that it goes in. I thought that was probably incorrect, so I separated the pot, which I know is not organic from that, but I personally did not know what to do with with the pot, whether it should go in the landfill black cart or if it should go in the blue cart, because I don't know if C R R has any interest in recycling the plastic containers that come from uh, garden shops. And as I have suggested, Newport Beach, probably the main thing the public needs to know, Director Zekel, Echols earlier mentioned a list of do's and don'ts. I I think the most important thing is, most helpful thing, at least for me, would be a list of things that the public misplaces in the carts and what is most commonly rejected by C R R, because much of what the public thinks is recyclable probably is not something that C R R wants in that cart at all. And that is a confusion I think you will find here as well. And perhaps the Citizens Advisory Committee will be discussing and can help with how to to do a better job of outreach. Should you go to a three cart system, and this happened in Newport Beach, because confusion is great in my city. Thank you.
Okay, um, I think we're probably down to the end of the agenda. So I'd like to go to oral communications and director's comments, and I'd like to echo what Director Schaefer said earlier. And it and it is the first item on the C A C work plan, and that is the thirteen eighty-three rollout of the three cart system. So I I get, I guess I'm still confused about, I think we're likely to get a three cart system. Uh, I'd like to know what it needs to do to finalize that concept. I think we're one of the few cities that don't yet have it. I'm very concerned, like Jim is saying, that you know, the rollout in Newport Beach was uh, at least according to him, was very confusing. And there was rampant concerns. I like Director Echols' direction on one of the former items where we have lists of things that should be in the cart and lists of things that shouldn't be in the cart. Generally, our carts are labeled on the lid with what should be in there. Eyes, those 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 decals that they put on the organics cart are in at least my personal survey, walking around the neighborhood, I have a, you know, I presented data to the staff in it earlier that then what percentage of them are in disarray? Can't read them anymore. The sooner we get that, the sooner we get that information together and begin to roll out that cart, the better chance we have of of it of being effectively used by the by our constituents. So I think that covers what you were interested in. So I would suggest or I I guess it would be appropriate for us to have a study session item on this in July along with the C A C's review of this item. So I'm I'm very excited and interested in this potential. Rolling out, rolling out a card of, rolling out a change of this magnitude, probably even though it's confused many of the Newport Beach residents, I think many of the residents in Costa Mesa wonder why we don't have the third card, because it came from cities that have a third card. So and 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 apparently it's still confusing in Newport Beach. Maybe Newport Beach is Newport Beach's citizenry don't turn over like the normal citizenry do, which is, I think, is about every three years for, on average, the realtors estimate. Anyway, long story short, how how can you see that he's got his hand up? Oh, okay, Mike, you have some input?
Uh, just a couple of comments, if if you don't mind, Bob. And first of all, I I want to thank you all for putting up with me this morning. I is they have been mentioned, my wife did test positive for for COVID, so I didn't want to, and I I have been tested negative. I think my wife caught it from Garth Brooks last week at the at the State Farm convention. At least that's my opinion. So thank you for for allowing me to be in on Zoom. Uh, my comments, and this is for Scott and Mark first. Um, here in my neighborhood, there's been a lot of activity with curb and gutter and some other things that the city is doing. And I've noticed a lot of markings in the street that say C M S D. So they're they're going through and marking lines apparently or or sewer lines. So hopefully, it's been communicated to our staff what's going on here in Mesa Verde and and if there's going to be any disruption to anything, you know, having a pump station on my property, there's a lot of marking, so just a heads up for Scott and Mark, if if they don't know that there's a lot of activity going on here in digging, apparently. So that that that's just for you guys. My second comment, we do a really good job on Facebook of putting out little blurbs about reminders and things. I think we do an excellent job. I wonder if before the Fourth of July, if we can't do a Facebook posting about disposal of fireworks. You know, just reminding the public on what to do with, after they're done with their fireworks, where they should put those, you know, that they're going to go into the black bins, I assume. But if we could come up with some kind of Facebook post reminding people not to put fireworks in their organics cart, for example, and and put them in 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 where they need to go, I I think that would be a really good, uh, good benefit to do. Wish everybody happy Flag Day. June fourteenth is Flag Day in the United States, and hopefully everybody has their flag up. And my final comment, and I'm gonna, because I want to go on public record congratulating my youngest grandson for making the Temecula Little League eight U All-Star team. Logan's team captured their 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 All-Star tournament last weekend. Grandma and I couldn't be there, unfortunately, but I just want Logan will never see this, but it makes me feel great congratulating my grandson and being an All-Star in in Little League baseball. So thanks again for your indulgence and hopefully see everybody at the next meeting live and in person.
Thank you, Mike.
Hey, Bob, I have one thing. The city's having a storm drain master plan discussion tomorrow night at six. I don't know if you're interested. Maybe that's some of the things Mike's talking about in the street. I'm not sure, but I thought I would look at it. I was, you know, I think it's something free to consider.
Definitely.
You know. Well, it's on Zoom. It should be out. The agenda should be out now.
And and what was that art again?
Storm drain master plan for the city. There's having a discussion starting on, they're gonna have two meetings. The first one is Thursday at six. Because I figure that could tie into things that we're doing, you know.
A few things. First, again, want to thank C R R and R for your help in our twenty-first annual Pilot Cup, where we had over two hundred and fifty elementary school teams participate over a week long, and their help with the trash services there at Jack Hammond Costa Mesa High School were much appreciated. So thank you to them for being a part of that. And then here this past weekend, our first shredding and compost giveaway event at the district, I couldn't have been more happy with the results. We had so many residents drive through, pick up compost. so many residents drive through, pick up compost, shred documents. All the feedback I got from those who were there, and also for those who commented to me privately afterwards, super successful event. And again, to CRNR for your partnership in that. The City of Costa Mesa and Raj and his team being out there, and then the school district and Director Perry for helping us get that site at Estancia. It's a perfect site, very well, plenty of space, and it was just run properly. And finally, a huge thank you to our employees of the district who all were out there. I mean, to give up your Saturday is not fun, but I think Scott would agree that, if nothing else, it was good team building, too, and, and, and for myself to be able to talk to some of our employees that I've never met and have conversations with them, even offline, in between lifting boxes out of cars and all that, it was valuable to me. So selfishly, it was great for me to get to know some of our folks. And so I would just request that, because I know it's a lot of work. And again, so many people in our volunteers on the CAC, and everyone who volunteered their time to be out there is incredible. But I would request that, while a lot of work, it's a huge benefit to our community. So I would request in next year's budget cycle, or the, you know, next couple of years, we continue to do this in some form or fashion. I think it's a great, great event and appreciated. And then finally, through my various years on different boards and commissions and all that stuff, I just want to commend Mark. And I'll debate that you couldn't write that grant. You probably could, and your staff reports are some of the best I've ever seen. I am dead serious when I say that, because you have to deal with five different people up here, and we all have five differing views, and to do a staff report that limits questions, you answer them before we ask them. And so I commend you on, every time you get up here, each time, clear, concise, and you already have thought of the potential questions before we even ask them. So I thank you. It's, it's great to make things a little bit easier on everyone. So thank you, Mark, and, and Vice President Schaefer, Flag Day. So get those flags up and appreciate everyone's time.
And we put up, the Lions Club put up 247 flags on, on Sunday morning, 6 o'clock.
Well, that, that brings up a question. I, I can see Arlene's hand up, but I'm, I'm already going. The flag disposal, you know, I was here one, one day recently, and there were bags of flags, plastic bags of flags in front of, of totally full bin of flags. Is, is there any hope on the horizon that we can solve where those flags could be properly disposed of?
Yeah, I'm working on it, yes.
Anything else from the board?
Okay, thank you. First of all, I just got something in the mail, but I ran out so quick, so I didn't get to see it. Fireworks affecting the trash cans, and it's a brochure on it. I don't know who it's from, but that's interesting. You know, I'll, I'll have to look at it and let you know on that one. Second, I won't go as long as you do. No, no, I don't mean it that way. No, I'm, I'm not being tactful. But what I'm saying is, I just think Nobilia did a fantastic job. I heard that she was the one who actually put this whole plan of the shredding and the compost together, and it was so, so worthwhile. I mean, it was just like a a wheel that was just completely done, that you knew where you're going, what you're doing, and it was staffed by everybody. I mean, it was just fantastic. And everything was into one thing. The communication was there. The people who wanted compost, they, they were so excited. There was a place for them, if that's all they wanted. And, you know, it, it just was very exciting to see something the way it was. Even the city participated, because they had took different street signs out to help the traffic. So that was great. So Nobilia, as well as all the staff who took the time, are to be complimented. And I agree on everything that Director said on this, because it was really worthwhile. See, the next thing is on this, next week will be actually, it's a, well, it's a planning session that we're going to have, strategic planning for CSDA, and it's down in San Diego. And I don't know how many of you are going, or if anyone is. No, no, no. Okay, Mike, are you going?
I, I don't have any plans to attend unless, unless something comes up with SDRMA.
Yes, you might look at the agenda.
Yeah, I will call, I'll call Laura Gill and find out if, if I need to be there.
Because there was something on your, your end.
Okay.
I thought you were going to be here, so I was going to tell you, but, you know, I'm sorry about your wife. Oh, wow.
No, she, she's progressing nicely. Thank you, Arlene.
Yeah, I hope, I hope you don't get it either.
Me too.
Yeah, but just check SDRMA, because
I'll, I'll call her this.
Different items on the agenda. That, so just to be sure.
Thank you.
And other than that, I guess I'll be the token. They'll be going to, and I just want to say that, you know, special congratulations to how we are a team, not only here, but it seems like our city people, the constituents, they come together for things that we lead them on, and I'm very impressed with that.
Well, I'd, I'd like to congratulate us on the staff and city and whatnot, who put the composting and shredding event together. I believe that there was probably more opportunity at that event than, than the town hall events that we've had. Staff may differ with me on that, but it was a substantial outreach effort. You know, the planning that went into it was excellent. We just need, you know, maybe to continue to think about what additional information we, we can provide to the public that does attend and, and have those events more often than not. I don't know how many people we get at town halls, but it's very limited. So thank you, staff, for all you've done in that event. If no other comment, I think it's probably a good time to adjourn. Thank you very much. Have a safe weekend. Have a safe drive home.